Go ahead and hit record and we'll dive into today's session. So again, hi everyone, welcome. My name is Charlie Chiketti with GVES.com, Green Building Education Services. We've been helping people since 2007 prepare for and pass the new LEED exams and now even the WELL AP exam. So this is what we do. We're an education company to both help you pass the exams and advance your career, make your companies even more competitive. Maybe for some of you it's a career pivot. And I want to make sure you know the latest with LEED version four. And then we also do continuing education. We've got some really cool classes in our library and we can actually auto-report those hours to GBCI on your behalf. So this is going to be a study session. I've got some resources I'm going to pull up and ask questions as we go. That's fine. You can do that over on the GoToWebinar on the chat box. You can do that in the question box. Everyone is muted right now, but if you've called in or you have a really good microphone or headset, you can raise your hand and I'll try to unmute you. But when in doubt, just shoot questions to me over on the question box, okay? All right, so let's start with some resources. That's how these LEED exams work. We want to make sure you have access to some resources. How does the LEED AP ID plus the exam compare to other exams? Well, the LEED Green Associate, which most all of you have already taken and passed, you know what, it's high level. It's 100 questions, multiple choice, and we've got to keep it high level. Why do we put a white roof on our building? Well, to reduce the heat island effect and to help save energy. What is that called? Well, let's have a solar reflectance index, an SRI score is pretty high. So that's where you need to know Green Associate. But now on one of the LEED AP with specialty exams like interior design and construction, we've got to know how do we meet each and every one of these LEED credits? What is the requirement? What is the threshold for the bicycle facilities? We have to know that now. We've got to get more detail because we've chosen to specialize in LEED for interior design and construction. Most of your questions are going to come from the commercial interiors concept, right? A lot of you are interior designers, architects, maybe we've got some tenant outfit interiors contractors and manufacturers on the call today. Thanks for joining us. You've got to think, if I'm going to do that next tenant outfit, in this case, think of an office build out, that's where your questions are going to come from. Technically, does LEED version four actually have retail and hospitality? Yeah, a few of the credits change to better accommodate for retail and hospitality under LEED version four, but you're going to be tested on, you're going to be quizzed on commercial interiors, okay? LEED version four. Let me show you something that I hope gets you excited. LEED professionals in the world, right? LEED's been around since 2000. We've got about 17 years worth of LEED projects. There's actually 37,000 commercial buildings or commercial projects, I should say, that have been LEED certified. That's amazing. I was just up in Washington DC with the US Green Building Council, we're an education partner, and they give us all this data, they give us all these statistics. And this is a good resource that a lot of you probably want to reference. But how many LEED professionals are there in the world? Well, as of April, there's about 200,000 total LEED professionals. That's the old LEED AP, that's the LEED Green Associate, and that's the LEED AP with which one of these specialties you want in the world. That might seem like a big number. I assure you, it's not. If you added up all the architects, engineers, contractors, manufacturers, subcontractors on new construction, if you added up all of the property managers existing, oh, you know what? Am I having trouble sharing my screen here? No, it should be okay. It's a small percentage of those that deal with buildings. But let me break it down a little bit more, and this is going to get you excited. There's 40,000 LEED AP BD plus C professionals, 36,000 LEED GA only. And let me go ahead and get one of our frequently asked questions out of the way. If you're a LEED Green Associate and you upgrade to this LEED AP ID plus C, yes, it wipes out your continuing education requirement for the LEED GA, and it will start a new two-year clock for your ID and C. But here's the one that's really cool. There's only 3,000, just under 3,000 LEED AP ID plus Cs in the world. If anyone has questions, if you would, just shoot me a message over in the question mark box. Hopefully the audio is good. If anyone wants to, over in the chat box or question box, please tell me if you can hear me okay. I want to make sure that we got good sound. So just under 3,000 LEED AP ID and Cs in the world. So I commend you for going after this credential, and it's going to set you apart. Not a lot have focused on the interior side here with their professional credentials. Well, I'm going to help you today. I know you're close to probably taking a pass in this exam, but this is a good resource, the LEED Professionals at a Glance. All right, so let's go to our candidate handbook. This is a key document. I've actually put it over in the GoToWebinar on the downloads. You can actually go over there and you can download the files. I put in the chat box how you can get access to some of this material. On our website, GVES.com, on our FAQ, we actually have great resources for all of the LEED and WELL credentials, if you're just curious. But in this case, you'd want to click on this candidate handbook, download it. It's going to show you not just where to sign up for the exam, it's going to show you where they pull questions from, and even how the exam has those 15 questions they throw out. I'm going to talk about that in a minute. But then you also, sometimes it's hard to find the new LEED scorecards or the LEED checklist, especially for LEED V4. We put those right here. You can download, again, just click this image and you can download this latest LEED version four scorecard. All of you are going to be tested on LEED V4. Any of your new projects that have not already signed up for LEED, because that cutoff date was last October, you will have to follow LEED V4, LEED version four. So make sure that you have these two documents handy. The ID and C credential, I'm going to cover some high-level stuff, and then I want to give you at least two or three takeaways in each category. I'm going to give you a couple of direct hints in location and water and energy as we go through. This exam, I've taken it and passed it. This exam is still tricky, I'll be honest. I've taken it past all the LEED exams. This one's not as hard as the BD plus C, so I know a few of you have already taken and passed the BD plus C. Congrats. That one's tough because you have to learn a lot about new construction and major innovations, and a little bit about schools and core and shell. And the BD plus C, I'd say, is a notch harder than the ID plus the exam that you're bound to take. It is more direct and technical than the LEED Green Associate. I'll also be honest with you, the LEED Green Associate, in my opinion, they can pull questions from anywhere across the green building spectrum. I think that makes it a little more difficult. Here with the ID plus C, we know exactly where the questions are coming from. How do I earn that specific LEED credit for a commercial interiors build out? So it's just more direct. Now, you still have to put in your study time. Don't think that you can just cram the night before, I work on a lot of LEED projects and go pass. No, it's still a tricky exam. Remember, there's three types of questions that are going to show up. At your prometric testing center, you're going to have three types of questions on that 100-question two-hour exam. You're going to get recall questions, you're going to get application items, and you're also going to get analysis. So recall, that's that quick recall, you know, what percentage for the bike racks? That's a quick recall, or a term and definition, or an acronym. Application is more of a scenario, and then the analysis, I call it more of like a scenario that really goes to a problem solving, and that's where they try to trick you. Do you really understand where this fits in to LEED? So those are your three types of questions. Remember, it's a 100-question, two-hour exam. Give me just some structure here first, and then we'll get into more details in each of the categories. Just some of my test tips, I've been doing this a long time. I didn't really tell you about my background, but you know, I was in construction, then real estate, then I got into green buildings. And part of my green building journey is not just working on LEED projects, which would be great, new and existing building LEED projects, but also a lot of education. And we've been helping people pass the LEED exams for a long time. And so I know how to pass these tests, and I love to teach others, here's what you need to know and apply it to your buildings, but here's also the exam world, how they're going to try to trick you there. But at the testing center, most everyone on here has already gone to a prometric testing center at least once. And so I think, you know, you've already gotten used to, my name on my driver's license is Charles, I go by Charlie, and just make sure whatever ID you're going to use, that that is what you have when you register for the LEED exams. When you get there though, it's closed book exam. They're either going to give you that scratch paper or that dry erase sheet. You know, make sure you use that time at the beginning of the task to take a few deep breaths, not that bad, you've got this, and literally jot down some things you might forget. I always encourage everyone to use that 10 minutes before you start your real two-hour exam to jot down some things, gather your thoughts, and then start the exam. You might not ever look at that brain dump that you made when you first sat down, but it's going to boost your confidence. Let's see what else. So you can leave the exam lab if you say you need to use the restroom, but your clock will still be running. You have to sign out and sign back in. You do get your score right there at the end of the exam, of course. You need a 170 or higher on this test, just like the other LEED exams. So yeah, you need about an 85% to pass. One of the trickiest things about this test is they are going to throw out some questions, okay? Out of 100 questions, they throw out 15. Those are called beta questions. Please don't think you're going to know which ones are beta questions and which ones are not. This is the GBCI trying to test out some questions for a future version of the exam. Now, some of you might already have your exam scheduled, and if you do, that's awesome because that helps force your studies. It really does. Life's busy, work's busy, I get it. But make sure you go ahead and sign up for the real exam. Now, if you signed up, let's say you're taking the exam in July, you might be getting some emails right now from GBCI saying, hey, we're changing the exam a little bit. Every June, the last two weeks in June, they reserve the right to slightly edit the real exam, and then by July 1st, they launch the new version. I'll be perfectly honest and transparent with you, the WELL AP exam is going to get a little bit of an adjustment, but ID and C, Green Associate, BD and C, these other LEED exams, very, very minor, maybe a couple credits. So continue with your studies, no cause for worry. What you're studying on our system and in the book, all that's going to help you pass this exam. So don't worry about that. If there were any major changes, we'd help announce that. The major changes on LEED exams, they come every four or five years, like when we went from LEED version three, also known as LEED 2009, when we upgraded from that to LEED V4, okay, that's when there's a major update. So you might be getting some emails, no stress there. Stick to your studies, and if there are any changes, we upgrade those on our practice test come July. No sweat. If anyone has any questions about that though, just message me and we'll talk more about it. So all of you have already taken the LEED Green Associate, and so now you can walk in and take this two-hour ID plus C exam. Some of you are already BD plus C professionals, same thing. Now you're eligible, you can take this other LEED exam. If anyone in the group or anyone watching this replay is not a LEED Green Associate yet, you do have to start with that professional credential exam first. Technically, can you take that exam and the ID plus C in the same sitting? Yes, but then it's back-to-back two-hour exams. All right, so here's where they pull questions from. Some of you may have seen this, but I'm just going through the LEED ID plus the candidate handbook. Where are they going to pull questions from? Again, as a LEED professional, you're going to want to be able to coordinate that project team. You can see that here, where they're going to pull some questions. You no longer have to have worked on a LEED project to take these exams. That was an old requirement that they pulled. Now they're going to put some more project-related scenario questions out there, you know, who would help with this documentation? You might get a few of those questions. You definitely have to understand the certification process, you know, 40 points for certified, 50 for silver, 60 for gold, 80 or more for platinum. And you understand what is regional priority versus a regional material. And that's just the perfect example of, you might have worked on a LEED project, or you might not yet, but hopefully with this credential you will. You need to understand the different components of LEED. And a regional priority, that's if we do the LEED credits that are really important to projects here in Atlanta, Georgia, where I'm based, compared to say San Francisco. You know what? If we went out of our way for those LEED credits here, then we're going to get some extra points, bonus points. Regional materials, that's that 500 mile, or now, I'm going to show you in a minute, the 100 mile radius. Are we really supporting the local businesses or reducing pollution related to trucking and other transportation materials? So just understand enough about LEED that they're not going to be able to trick you. You understand where all this fits in. Again, these are where some of your, how does LEED work from start to finish? How do we kick off a project? What are the fees? How do we get that plaque on the wall? And it shows you where they're pulling questions from. On this exam, if we look at a scorecard, in my opinion, you don't have to know exactly the wording of each and every credit and exactly the point total. You definitely want to know where does everything fit? Which are weighted heavier than others? And, you know, if I do this LEED credit, what others might it affect? That's how you use this document as you're navigating around and as you're studying, okay? All right, let's keep going here. Then, what happens is they tell us how many questions they're going to pull from each category. So integrative strategies, you know, getting more people together earlier in this project design and construction, we're going to get eight questions. Location and transportation, we're going to get eight questions. And one thing that's happened is the sustainable sites category, we'll talk about that in a minute, but you know, we're really just focused on location and transportation here, and that kind of skips ahead to water efficiency. It's real interesting what happens when it comes to that on our projects. Water efficiency, 10 questions. Let me show you one more resource, actually. As you're studying, this is what I recommend. If you have the 600 or 700-page reference guide, you know what, for this exam, you can get more detail. Or you can go to the USGBC.org/credits and use this on your projects too. I give this to all the project teams. And you can just pick ID plus C, commercial interiors, LEED version four. That's where you're going to be tested on the latest and greatest version of LEED. And you can actually go through and see all of these different credits. So if we really forgot what the bicycle facilities, what percentage do we need to hit? What number do we hit? Sometimes the USGBC site's just a little bit slow, but just that'll pull up, and you can be like, okay, 2.5% for peak visitors and 5% for long-term storage. And so what pops off this page is what you're going to probably see on your exam. Numbers are going to pop off this page. That's what's on the ID plus C exam. So in this case, you might get a question on your ID plus the exam about, you know, what distance is allowed for the bicycle storage? 200 yards, walking distance. You're going to need to know that. And then you get into some of these other requirements. So USGBC.org/credits, very good resource here. All right, let's see. Energy and atmosphere, the biggest category, it's weighted the most. That's where you can get up to 15 questions, okay? Honestly, on the ID plus the exam, I really think this is the one category out of all of them that you really want to brush up on. This one, followed by materials, it just gets tricky on the ID plus the exam. I feel like if you've already passed a LEED Green Associate, if you've already passed a BD plus C, some of you have, then you have a big head start on a lot of the green building concepts. But what really makes interiors different? It makes sense. You're going to have more furniture, you're going to have different types of materials and more finishes. So the MR, the Materials and Resources credits. And energy, we're looking at energy differently. Less base building, more very specific watts per square foot on the lighting, very specific on energy star equipment. And so make sure you really brush up on EA and MR as you're studying. But here are where they're going to pull some questions from those categories. 17 questions from materials, so that is a very heavy category for this exam. 16 questions from IEQ, the Indoor Environmental Quality Section. Again, all that's going to add up, they throw out 15 what they call pre-test or beta questions. Out of 100 questions, we've got to make sure that 15, don't get frustrated, keep a good pace as you're going through the exam. One of my best pieces of advice at the Real Testing Center is just try to treat each question equally, and you know, don't get hung up on any one question. If you're not sure, guess at it, mark it, maybe if you have time, you'll come back to it later, but at least put down an answer. At the end of the exam, no matter what, don't go through all 100 questions. Again, you're going to talk yourself out of some right answers. Instead, really focus on, I guessed at it, I marked it, unless I have a good reason to do so, I'm not going to change that answer. You need about an 85% to pass this test. Yes, right at the end of the exam, you'll get your score like you did on your Green Associate. All right, any questions so far? This is the LEED Professional Candidate Handbook. I just want to make sure everybody knows where to gain access to that. Again, GVES.com/faq, if you want to go into the ID plus C. Okay. All right, let's take a look at our scorecard together. And now we're going to go through some of the categories. I really want to make sure that you understand the level of detail to get here with your studies. And again, if there's any questions, please just over in the question box, go ahead and shoot those to me. Okay, so the first one is Integrative Process. Pretty straightforward, two points. But what happens here, you know, you're going to get several questions. This is where it gets a little interesting on a LEED exam. Even though it might seem like it's not worth a lot, it's optional. Remember, LEED credits are optional, LEED prerequisites we have to do. You're going to get a handful of questions about the Integrative Process. So there's several questions on the ID plus the exam from the Integrative Process, you know, for example, what happens during the discovery phase of the Integrative Process? You'll need to know that. How do you, what do the acronyms BOD and OPR stand for? A lot of you familiar with that, but Basis of Design and Owners Project Requirements. Again, we're getting those documents created as early as possible. Now that we have that, not just design-build team, but a lot of other specialty contractors, a lot of people involved earlier, we're all looking at those documents together. You'll get some questions like that under IP, Integrative Process. Under Location and Transportation, you know, pretty straightforward as far as how do you get 18 points right off of that? That's if your project is located within a LEED Indy development. If this tenant outfit is in a building that's on a LEED for neighbor development site, you get all 18 points. If that's not the case, and you might need to know that, 18 points, heavily weighted there, 18 total points. If you're not on a LEED Indy site, then we can get into these optional credits here. So density and surrounding uses, you can see eight points, that's a big deal. So this is an example, if I'm studying for the ID and C exam, I'm going to go to USGBC.org/credits, and I'm going to go up here to Surrounding Density and Diverse Uses, because we can get up to eight points. And I'm going to get familiar with that scale, and I'm going to say, okay, we can get three to six points for our surrounding density. So within a quarter mile radius of the project, are we meeting some of these densities? On the ID and C exam, you'll get a handful of calculations out of 100 questions, not as many calculations as you got on the BD plus the exam. Now, a lot of you are Green Associates, you probably didn't have any calculations, maybe one. But now on the ID plus the exam, you are going to need to know more detail. How do we earn this credit? What threshold do we hit? And sometimes a simple calculation. Now, remember, on the on-screen exam, you can click a button and you can get a calculator. Since it's a closed book exam, you can't bring a calculator with you or any paper or anything like that. But there's an on-screen calculator. But if I'm studying, I'm focused on, okay, three to six points for surrounding density, quarter mile radius, or taking a look at a residential and non-residential density, like essentially the buildings around us, do we have a heavy residential, or do we at least have some buildings around us that are taller than one story? Like, you know, are we in a rural area? Are we in the suburbs? Are we closer to a city center? LEED is always going to reward us for building closer to city centers. There's already infrastructure there. And/or one to two points, you've seen this one before, but if our project is within a half a mile to some basic services, then we can get these additional points. So again, are we close to certain restaurants, a post office, a gym, you go down the list of, can people not get in a car to take care of an errand? Can they instead walk? We've built this next LEED project close enough, and that's how we get the other points. So this one's called Surrounding Density, Diverse Uses, up to eight points possible. So if I'm studying for the exam, that's the level of detail I'm going to get, so we can get those eight points. As we go through this, a few other hints in this category. You're going to get a few questions about quality transit, okay, in different situations. So a basic service, a train, a bus, is not a basic service for LEED. Trains and buses fit into transportation, okay? But if we're taking a look at quality transit, this is a commercial interior project, right? So maybe it's one floor, part of a floor, maybe it's 10 floors, but you need to know some of these requirements. We can get up to seven points if, zoom in here, within a quarter mile, we are, we have two bus stops that are either existing or planned, and we can also have a half a mile distance to a rail line. And those are the two main buckets that we have quality transit close enough. That's what we need to know here for our project. Okay, let's take a look at, and this is just project world, but as we calculate like our bike racks, depending on the size of your commercial interior project, it might apply just to your tenant, or it might kick in to apply for most of the building. So you've got to take a look. When in doubt on this exam, we're really focused on what does the tenant control? Sometimes the base building HVAC system there, maybe an air handle on the floor or a restroom on the floor, yes, you would have to extend to that for some efficiencies, but kind of the rule of thumb on interiors is mostly what's in the control of the tenant during that design and construction. Let's see, any questions about location and transportation? I know some of you are well into your studies, some of you are just starting your studies, but feel free to shoot a question over and I'll try to answer that. Water efficiency, this is the first prerequisite, right? On an interiors project, we have to save enough water. Make sure you understand your water fixtures. If you see the Water Sense label, who's behind that? That's the EPA. So some of what you've learned on the LEED Green Associate exam will carry over, but that's more framework, kind of foundational, some acronyms. Now it's how do we earn the prerequisite? How do we earn the up to 12 points here? So let's take a look at that. If we go to USGBC.org/credits, and we've got to go back to interiors, we'll take a look at our water efficiency. So just to meet the prerequisite, we have to be 20% better than plumbing code. What fixtures do we include? Of course, toilets, urinals, faucets, and showerheads. That's what we have to be installing that's even better. So if you get a plumbing fixture schedule that comes across your desk, we've got to level that up. We don't want to put in just code minimum here. We really want to do better with everything. Now, that's just to meet the prerequisite, but how do we get the up to 12 points? Yes, this is an example of more detail you've got to get to to pass your ID plus the exam. So let's take a look at this table. 25% savings, 30, 35, 40, 45, 50. If you can get 50% water savings, then you get all 12 points for interiors. Now, that's where you're really going to the high-efficiency toilets, the 1.28. That's where you're really going to maybe pint flush urinals. It's where you've got not just aerators on your faucets, but also hands-free where you can turn the faucets to only run for maybe 13 seconds. So you've got to really save water to get all 12 points, but you can do it. So definitely understand this table for your exam. You might get a question specifically about these percentages. So that is part of the level of detail you have to get to. Now, on a LEED AP with specialty exam, they kick in more of the exemplary performance questions. So if we look at a LEED scorecard, at the bottom right is where we have our innovation category. In a little while, we'll talk about innovation, let's think outside the box. We'll also talk about regional priority or exemplary performance. So we can get a point here if we really max out our water efficiency. So we can get a point here if we really max out our water efficiency. But you need to know what threshold do we need to get to? And then if we take a look at that here, 50% is going to get you the base points. 55% or higher, so it's usually the next step in this progressive scale, you'd get a bonus point. You'd get an exemplary performance point. You might need to know that. All right, any questions? So yeah, looks like there's a question coming in about the surrounding density. I can go back to that. Yeah, great question here. Thanks, Jane. Let's go back and take a look at the surrounding density. So if you're on a LEED project, how do you actually do this? Yeah, it's just that, there's, there's two. There's the surrounding density, and then there's the diverse uses. I'm going to start with the diverse uses. You literally, what we do on our projects, you take a Google map, you plot, here's our building, and then you would label A, B, C, D, until you've labeled enough of those basic services that people can walk to. You draw a half a mile radius and you show, look, we're in a dense area. Look at all of these things people can walk to. So that's how we would document for diverse uses. Now, I'll be perfectly honest, surrounding density is much harder. You could probably look up and find out some of the residential density, but the non-residential, you know, we've got to get square footages of buildings, some floor area ratios, we've got to know more about those buildings. So there is some legwork here to either look up public information or actually contact the other buildings around you and determine, you know, what kind of building, their square footage, how many stories. Similar though, we'd take a map, we'd plot out the different buildings, and you do have to do some math. Right here on the right side, you can view a sample form of what information you would ultimately provide for LEED. But that's how we would do this. The surrounding density is much more detailed to document than a simple, here's where we're at, here's a half a mile radius, people can walk to these basic services. So good question there, thanks. Okay, let's go back to our LEED scorecard, just trying to give you some hints that I think you really need to focus on in each category. And then we're going to do some practice questions together. Energy and atmosphere, 38 possible points, three prerequisites. Double down on this category, it can get a little more advanced, especially around the optimized energy performance. Some of you will notice that an older version of LEED for interiors used to have this broken out more, five points for HVAC, five points for lighting, five points for this zoning, and now it's kind of really been combined. So we have to get familiar with that. Understand your prerequisites, we have to do those. We don't get any points. We have to be a certain level of energy efficiency. Fundamental commissioning has to happen, no R11 refrigerant. And then we get into our optional points. So let's see. Let me go back to water for a minute. You might get a tricky question. If we have an interiors project that only has a break room sink, does this need to be included? You know, what's our approach here? Is this a base building? And so for a break room sink, you would include it that it is a tenant-controlled fixture. And you can calculate how often it's used. So you might want to get to a dual flow aerator on that break room sink. But then if you did not have a restroom, you would have that restroom calculation under the base building, and it would show on that floor, there is a chance that the restroom that that tenant would have access to, even though it's a base building, maybe needs to upgrade the urinals or the faucets. So just understand the difference between what's a base building in the tenant scope versus maybe a break room sink that, yes, absolutely. If that's the only fixture you have, you need to make sure that's going to be efficient. Okay, so let's go to energy. You may even get some questions about a commissioning plan versus a report. Of course, a commissioning plan is what's going to be followed. Then the testing happens, let's make sure everything is installed and running efficiently. And then there will be a final report. And all that's done by your CXA, your commissioning authority. Let's see. Then you get some scenario questions. For example, if a solar, a PV system is installed after the commissioning happened, does the commissioning agent have to come back? And so that's just where you've got to use discretion, that, you know, was this part of the base scope? Was this part of what we were submitting for LEED? Or was this a phase two? And, and just use your discretion there. But if it was, the, the rule of thumb is if it's on the construction documents that you're submitting to LEED saying, this is the project we designed and built it green, and no matter when something was installed, then yes, you have to come back and test. But if it was a phase two, it wasn't part of your LEED application, then no, that would not need to be tested. So you're going to get some questions like that, where you've got to think about it. And when in doubt on these LEED exams, make sure you pick the greenest answer. Pick the one that makes LEED and this process look favorable, okay? Then you'll get a couple other scenario questions here in the energy category. For example, what two prerequisites or credits might benefit from installing CO2 monitors? Or benefit from installing lighting controls? And so that's where we need to take a look at, let's say, CO2 monitors. Of course, it's going to help with energy efficiency, so optimize energy performance. But then it's definitely going to help here with our enhanced air quality strategies, right? And so you need to know where would that fit in? Where would that affect our LEED project? As you learn on the LEED Green Associate exam, for the LEED AP ID plus C, you need to know your four main ASHRAE standards. ASHRAE 90.1 is our energy code in most markets. ASHRAE 62.1 is our ventilation code. I'll put these over in the chat box. ASHRAE 55 is our thermal comfort. And ASHRAE 52.2 helps us select filters. Energy code. Any questions about that? Ventilation. They have 55 is thermal comfort. Sorry about that. Of course, I'm on a live webinar, someone's calling. Let's see, 55 is our thermal comfort. And finally, 52.2 is our filters. So make sure you still are familiar with those, those ASHRAE standards. Let's see, there's a question. Apologize, can everybody hear me okay? There was a comment that maybe, maybe my microphone cut out. So if you can hear me, if you would, send me a message. Sorry about that, trying to make the best here. Okay, all right, good, thanks, let's keep going. So I'm trying to give you a few hints, level of detail, energy atmosphere, some scenario questions, the ASHRAE standards. You might get a calculation. Again, this is just based on my experience, my team's experience. We write a lot of practice test questions. Hopefully, all of you have access to those. That's how we make our study material. Just so, based on what we think you might need to know, renewables. So let's take a look at that one. Green power and carbon offsets. If I'm studying for the ID plus the exam, I'm going to go down here. I'm going to click on green power and carbon offsets. And I'm going to know these percentages, because I might need to do a calculation on my real test about these, okay? Remember, we want to be as energy efficient as possible. And then we don't need as much solar, then we don't need as much green power offsets. Or, as you'll notice here, with LEED version four, now there's a five-year green power offset. And we can get one or two points, 50% or 100% offset. And you can go through and see how we calculate all that out, okay? So you're going to need to know those percentages. All right, so that's the energy category. Let's go to the materials category. Under MR, and for those of you in design and construction, you've seen a big shift that's happening. We now are pushing harder on manufacturers to green up their supply chain. What are they doing to go green? What's really in this material? It's no longer with LEED V4, just about where did this material come from, within 500 miles? Is it recycled material? Is it low VOC? Those are great, and they still show up in this newer version of LEED. But now to get these extra material points, we have to push a lot harder on the building product disclosure and optimization. So let's take a look. There's two prerequisites. We still have to set up our tenant buildout in our new building to do recycling. But we also now have to have a CND, a Construction and Demolition Plan. What are we doing with that waste? If we do better, then we get optional two points here. But we have to have a plan. We have to try to recycle that construction debris or donate materials that are being demolished that can be salvaged. If you do a 10-year lease, you get one point. Some of these are pretty straightforward. But then we're going to get into our materials here. So let's take a look at EPDs. Go back to usgbc.org/credits, and let's get into our EPDs. A few things you need to know here. But with the construction and demolition waste, remember, you can do that by volume or you can do that by tonnage, so weight or volume. A few things like that will show up on the exam. EPDs, so you need to understand that we would need 20 different installed products to be documented, but from five different manufacturers. Do we have approved EPDs, environmental product declarations? How does this material really affect the environment for enough materials? And/or, and we'd go down, you can look at, have we improved that material? Or are those materials really better for the environment? And don't max out some of these environmental attributes. So a little bit here about EPDs. You're going to get three or four questions about life cycle. You know, like how would you calculate the life cycle for furniture and reusing furniture or movable walls? Some of that, you know, if you have a good foundation with LEED, to be able to problem solve, you'll be able to figure out. With the new version of LEED, LEED version four, when we go to our material, I'm sorry, our sourcing of raw materials, this is where you're going to get into the more familiar, you know, eco-friendly materials. This is where we're going to take a look at, where did the material come from? Do we have any bio-based products? Do we have the FSC wood? So just know where does that fit in? Okay, the materials credit for sourcing of raw materials, one or two points available. That's where we get at least one point now for having those recycled content, salvaged materials, FSC wood. It's all been grouped now into just this one point. To get more points under materials, we've got to get some corporate sustainability reports, some EPDs, and so forth. So we could have a whole talk on that. Actually, we do have a whole talk on that. We gave one last week. And we can drop that link out there if you want to learn more about EPDs. Just a few more. Let's go to the IEQ category. If we look at our indoor environmental quality category, it's at the top right of your LEED scorecard. 17 possible points and a couple prerequisites. Still have to bring in enough outside fresh air and no smoking, of course, in the, in this office space. A lot of optional points here, but just know what fits into this category. It's not just air quality. We're going to take a look at thermal comfort, giving people lighting controls, daylighting and views, and even acoustics. And now this has jumped in to LEED version four. Acoustics used to just show up on LEED for schools. Maybe we had a, when a child in the back of the room couldn't hear the teacher because there's an HVAC system humming above their head, that's not productive. So now that's made its way into, in this case, LEED for commercial interiors. Couple points available for acoustic performance. It's optional. Remember credits? We want to mix and match to get enough credits to get our project LEED certified, silver, gold, or maybe up to platinum. So let's take a look at some IEQ. And I think there might be a question coming in. Let's see. Okay, yeah, I'll put out the link for the EPD talk that we gave last week. It was a lot of fun. Well, this is what I do for a living, so I can say it was fun, right? All right. IEQ, remember your ASHRAE standards. ASHRAE 62.1 is ventilation. ASHRAE 55 is thermal comfort. ASHRAE 52 helps you pick out those MERV filters. Some of this I get, you've seen before, it might show up again. MERV 8 during construction, MERV 13, those better filters during occupancy. MERV 13s though, might have an impact on your energy performance. You have to weigh that out. For your ID and C, know which of these credits have an exemplary performance opportunity. And make sure you've looked that up ahead of time. No smoking, also known as ETS. Where do we move those smoking areas? So let's go over to this document, this website, usgbc.org/credits. Let's take a look. Okay, that's right, that's just saying 25 feet away from the building, the main entrances. And make sure we have posted some no smoking signs. So no smoking in the building, and move your smoking areas away from air intake and main entrances. Absolutely. I don't know if anyone's reading up on WELL, but if you are on a WELL building or WELL tenant outfit, no smoking, very similar. But on your way to the smoking area, if you have a smoking area, you have to post signs that really show how bad smoking is, like images and like, this is really bad. And so really pushing against the smoking and the secondhand smoke here on LEED and WELL. Let's see, what else? Pretty similar on the low emitting materials, your low VOC materials for your ID and C exam. Make sure you know green seal for paint and the South Coast Air Quality Management District for maybe some of our sealings. So you want to go through that list and know which standard would I be looking for to make sure I've met the low VOC requirements. And then a little bit about calculations, more dimensions when it comes to our interior lighting, daylighting and views. So let's just take a look at daylighting, for example. And as an architect or interior designer, if you're on a LEED project, you could spend a lot of time documenting daylighting, but you want to be proud of that, that WELL daylight design. So you're going to have to put in some hours here to document. So you can either do a simulation, you can do some calculations, or you can even do some measurements at the end of the project. But we have to prove that enough of the occupied area gets a certain amount of daylight, and then we can earn these points. So you're going to want to come back and be familiar with some of these percentages. So I don't want to skim over today and not say you need to know percentages. No, you need to know a lot of the numbers to hit, the acronyms, how do I earn these LEED credits? So for this one, I would be familiar with, look, we can do a simulation, and we'd have to hit these percentages. We could do calculations at these percentages, or we could do testing at these percentages. And then sometimes on the LEED AP specialty exams, anything like in fine print, like right here, definitely is going to be a question. So with FFNE, Furniture Fixtures and Equipment, you're going to need to know some of this information. That's probably going to show up on one of your test questions. Okay, all right, let's just wrap up the scorecard. I want to do a few practice questions with you. So go back to our scorecard. All that's left is the Innovation and Regional Priority section. There's 110 possible points on any of our LEED projects. Six points under innovation, four points under regional priority. Innovation is where we think outside the box. We can also do pilot credits. There's a really interesting pilot credit for bird collision deterrents, for example. That's not in all the LEED rating systems, but if we did that on our building, we could get an innovation point there. Exemplary performance, we've maxed out some LEED credits. LEED AP for LEED version four, and this will help all of you. Talk about the competitiveness, talk about your career, even within your firm. In order to earn the one point for LEED AP on a LEED version four project, you, in this case, have to be a LEED AP ID plus C. So you now have to have a LEED AP that is specialized in that type of building or project to get the one point. And so make sure you get that for all of your interiors projects coming up. Regional priority, I mentioned, did we focus on the LEED credits important to our area, to our region, to our city? They're going to give us six options. We can do up to four of the six. If in Atlanta, Georgia, water efficiency is a regional priority, we can get the base points underwater over here. But if we hit the right threshold, then we'd also get a regional priority point over here. All right, any questions about the scorecard? Again, some resources I pointed out, and then we're going to do a few practice questions together. And this is where you can download the candidate handbook, the scorecard, the other resource for those webinars that I mentioned. And we are trying to put out more and more subject matter expert webinars. This is what we do, we're an education company, right? You can go to this stage, I'll put it in the chat box. And so last week, we did this EPDs, HPDs. We have one coming up next week that's a live recording, so maybe join that one next week. But we put out the But we put out these on a regular basis, almost one a week. And so you might want to just bookmark this, this page here. And you can see some of our upcoming talks. We have one next week about EPDs and HPDs on the 28th. All right, so let's go to some practice tests. Most of you are already customers of GBEs, Green Building Education Services, thank you. We really appreciate you, want to help you pass the exams, want to help you later with your continuing ed. We're open to feedback too. One reason I'm putting on this study session is, you know, there's not a lot of ID and C customers, and I want to make sure that you have our great practice tests. And if you want our flashcards and our other tools, maybe some of you are going through the course right now. And if you have any feedback on that, please give me feedback. But hopefully this study session today will boost your confidence. Okay, I really feel better about taking this exam. So for our ID and C practice test, we give you 400 different questions. You can take test A as many times as you want. If you're further along with your studies, you can take these by category. You can do just the LEED process or just water efficiency, and you can really shore up your studies. I like to, after incorrect answers, tell me why I missed it, turn off scoring. Let's take a few together. A project team is working on three retail spaces located on different sites in the same area. Which statements are true regarding the construction waste management plan? And so you'd read through these, this one's a pick two. A lot of the questions on the real exam, they used to have more pick two and pick three. The good news for all of us is now there's less of those. It's more just single answer, A, B, C, D, like a multiple choice. You might get a handful of pick two. Does the plan identify at least five types of materials? Does it include hazardous material removal? Does it have to include an overall project waste diversion goal? The same plan can be used for all three projects. So let's just pick a couple here and see what our system says. Our system says, no, it was actually A and C, and here's why. Since I picked that option, give me an explanation. Then if we missed it, it told us why. I suggest you take maybe 20 questions during lunch break. It's hard to set aside an hour, hour and a half, two hours to study. If you can, perfect, if you can't, chip away at these studies. Our system will save where you left off. A daycare facility has children's toilets. What should be, should the plumbing engineer verify? Pick one, the flush rates are excluded from the design case. The flush rates of the flush valves are compatible with the bowl size to ensure performance. The uses per day of the toilets is lower than that for adults. The flush rate is 50% less than a commercial toilet. Well, so what should the plumbing engineer verify? And so we go through here, and, you know, let's say we pick D. Our system's going to say, nope, actually it's B. We've got to make sure that we've specified. So they still got to do their job, like, we don't want to put in a certain flush rate just because, we want to make sure it's still going to be compatible, it's still really going to work. At the end of the day, make sure the building's still going to operate, make sure that, you know, this process was a smooth process here as we're going for LEED. At any time, you can hit exit the test, okay? Here we are, June 22nd already. If you finish 100 questions, you can hit, this will change to review, and you get a report card on our system. Here's how you did in water, here's how you did in energy, go back and look. So make sure you finish 100 question pool, you get a lot of good feedback on our software. But let's do, let's do one more together. Sorry about that. Let's say we're close to our real exam, and we really need to do better on the water category. This time, after every single question, tell me what's going on. So let's just do a couple more together. So let's, let's go through this, and then I think I've got some closing comments, there's a couple questions coming in. A project team that uses, what three strategies would achieve the MR credits for life cycle impact reduction, design for flexibility? And so we have to pick three here. Reuse or salvage interior, non-structural elements, that sounds pretty good. Reuse, salvage, or refurbish furniture and furnishings. Include at least one major component or system, purchase, contract, sure at least 50%. So you can see, this one's a pretty detailed one. And this is an example of a question, if you're just like, I don't know, you know what? Read through it, always read the question, maybe read the question twice, read all the answers. Make your selection, mark it, get through the exam, keep a good pace. Come back and look at the ones you marked, and only if you have a good reason to do so, will you change it. So let's say we did these three here. No, we just missed it, it was actually C, D, and E. And our system gives us a pretty good explanation here of why that's the case. All right, let's do one more together. How can a project team maximize synergies among the materials and resources credits? So within that category, how can we maximize those synergies? By selecting salvaged materials, by selecting products that have full disclosure and multiple credits, by selecting products with low greenhouse gas emissions, by selecting products manufactured with materials that were extracted responsibly. So see, all of this shows up somewhere within LEED, right? But which one really goes a little further? I think B, I'm not always right, but by selecting products that have full disclosure, multiple credits. Let's see, let's see what happens here. And it was B, we got it right, and we can move on. So, let's recap. We've given you some good resources today. There was a question coming in that, again, most of you are GBEs customers, thank you. We really appreciate you. If you already bought some material and it's been a while, no problem. Log into your account, and, so you go to GBEs.com, and up here at the top right, click on my account. And if you forgot your password, I'm logged in. But if you have a screen that you can log in, you can say forgot password, log in, and just see if you still have your practice tests, or your study guide, or MP3s, or any of the tools. If you, for some reason, don't, or it's expired, you need a little more time, email customercare@gbe s.com. Tell them you were in our ID and C webinar, and that you're just, you're asking for an extension, and we'd be glad to give you an extension on any of the products, okay? So just email customercare@gbe s.com, and we'll get you taken care of. So any questions for me? I think some of you are about to take the exam, some of you just now getting back into the study mode. Remember, chip away at it, where does this fit in to LEED? Especially LEED for commercial interiors. There are a handful of calculations, you do have to put in study time. This exam is not as hard as some other LEED exams, but you still got to put in the study time. When you pass this exam, there are going to be one of about 3,000 people that have it, and that's a big deal. Okay? How about just study time? How long do I recommend study time? So, you know, for the LEED Green Associate, you know, we recommend anywhere between like three and eight weeks, just depending on your base building terminology and your kind of overall sustainability kind of, just familiarity. If you've already passed the LEED Green Associate, and, you know, I would say ID and C, probably similar, three to eight weeks, doesn't mean you cram every night for three to eight weeks. It just means, you know, let me sign up for the real exam. Let's say you're going to sign up for one month from right now. Now you just break down your studies, you know what? This week, I'm going to go through these two LEED categories. I'm going to read through everything I can on USGBC.org/credits. Next week, the following, maybe you do some reading, but then you take lots and lots and lots of practice tests. Some people learn best by reading, and we've given you some resources. We've got some online coursework. Some learn best by just doing lots and lots of practice tests. And if you miss a lot of questions in one category, then go back to the other resources and shore up that category. So, I'm similar for the ID and C, for BD and C, I'd say a little longer. But ID and C, I don't know if this is helpful, if it's crazy, it's a big range, but, you know, three weeks of pretty solid studying, or eight weeks of let me just chip away at it a little bit each week. So I don't know if that helps, but first and foremost, we want you to pass this test. If you need anything at all, shoot us an email, I'll put my email over in the chat box. And just, you know, let me know when you're going to take the exam, and let's give you some more hints as you're, as you're going in there, okay? So I'm excited for you. Hopefully you got a lot of value out of today's study session. And if you have any colleagues studying for the ID and C, we're going to send this out as a recording, probably later today, maybe, maybe tomorrow. Feel free to share it with them. Again, we appreciate you being a customer of GBEs. Hopefully you really like using our material. If you do, you know, please give us feedback when you pass the test, and tell other people about GBEs.com, that's my ask, but good luck on your exam. Everybody have a great rest of the day, and look for this recording by tomorrow, and good luck on your test, thanks so much.